Good morning. Uh, it is nine thirteen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Albs, I can roll call please.
District one? Yep. District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yep.
I'm here, you have one.
Yeah, we have one, please. Uh, agenda approval, review and approval of the agenda. I know what we talked about last week and of course this week is that we're gonna, we're gonna put on the CARES Act that we're gonna, we're gonna discuss how we're gonna, what we're looking at and how we're, we're gonna have the CFO. You know, we're looking at some type of mechanism, how we can disperse it to our membership that, who needs the qualifications of, you know, during this, during this pandemic, that our CARES Act when you can't assist them, so. So that's what we're gonna talk about. And I know all of us council, you know, talking, you know, talking about this and the, up at, up at TEC and also around the office here, I think that we're all, we're all kind of in agreement with it. But I know that we have to iron out or work out the details of the application itself. And of course, we're gonna have legal look at it and review it. And I know there's other, other models around the state of Minnesota like with Boise Falls and Leech Lake. You know, they're all gonna have different models and we're gonna look at what would work best for whiter and how we can distribute our money to our membership to get help to them. Cause I know a lot of our, our membership out there do need assistance. So I know that, you know, we get, we get a lot of calls that need to, to help with, you know, not only, you know, like doors and windows and, but I mean assistance just to survive, you know? And I know that's the thing that we're, we're taking into consideration to, to help our membership. So we can, you know, help you, so. Uh, if any other council member wants to talk a little bit about it, I mean, if you guys wanna say a few words about it, that's fine. So, be good.
So I'll head to the, on the way. Okay.
Yeah, I just, you know, we should try to get as much direct assistance as possible, Mr. Chair. So, this is a good opportunity to help people and, you know, helping the people is what we're here for.
Yeah.
Be good. So as soon as we get the, the photo, or the prototype of this application process, you know, we, we will get out there. Hopefully we can approve this by, I'm hoping by next week sometime, I'm hoping that, you know, I think we're all in agreement of getting it approved. And I'm hoping next week we can get the application finished, get it out on the website, get it out on our Facebook page. You can download it, it'll be a PDF file, you can fill it up, fill it out, you can fax it, you can mail it, or you can even like drop it off, I guess, we'll have a drop off box or something. I mean, we'll have something like that where we can bring these applications in and then we'll, we will start distributing some of this money to our, to you, so. Be good. All right, I got next up on the agenda is Ben Bement at nine thirty. I know we're a little early, is he getting on? Oh, no, no, wait, wait, yeah, we still have two minutes. Guys are way ahead of myself here.
Well, I was hoping to see if we could get the Mike LaRocque to come talk to community racing, possibly, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yeah, Mike LaRocque and then, well, you know, a lot yesterday during the, the, the governor's call yesterday, we talked to Commissioner Harrington and we stressed to you a lot of, of training to our deputies. And I know Mike's gonna follow up with Nigel, the liaison to the commissioner. And he wants to sit down with us and talk to us, so we'll have a little meeting. And maybe we can invite him to a Zoom meeting for this, us and the council. You know, if he wants to, Commissioner Harrington wants to, you know, if we wanna get issues out there. And I know Commissioner Harrington, you know, he wasn't aware of it, so. But I know Mike reached out to Monoma and Clearwater and also Becker. I know he had a lot of support from the following counties to implement some type of cultural training. I know that the tribal leaders too, yesterday's call is like, you know, they expressed a lot of concerns, especially even the, our Lakota brothers down south of us here, they expressed a lot of, you know, sympathy for our, our member, our BAM member that got LQ was, his secret items were kind of like disrespected, so. I know that, and these are, this is the, the, how do you say it, the, the, we don't need to have it no more around us. I mean, it's, it's even when, you know, when you go to, even to the, to the airport, when I go to the airport with my pipe fake, the TSA is even aware of this, so I mean, their training is something that, and we talked about her bind aid, you know, that he does these cultural sensitive trainings to various police departments across the state. So hopefully we can get her or some type of training to our, our fellow counties that surround us, so. And now Mike can come in and talk about that too.
Commissioner Harrington, he's supposed to be on conference call with us, you said?
Yeah, he wants to reach out to us and I mean, we can set that up for all of us if we wanna talk to Commissioner Harrington.
I'd like to talk to him about, about these probation officers, you know?
Okay.
So many members here that can't, no driver's licenses, can't get down to see their PO officer and they don't go down there, then there's a warrant out for them.
They're gonna violate it, yeah.
You know, why in the hell can't they come up here and sit in this conference room here in Maplewood? Some of them, you know, guys on parole and.
Well, I, I do wanna add to that because I did get a message from a family, and I won't say who, but they're having issues getting hold of their PO.
Yeah.
And it's causing all kinds of problems.
Yeah.
And not only that, but for the cops, you know, um, you know, we, I think that training you're talking about, Mike, is really important because, um, you know, it's not just in certain counties, it's all the counties out here that we have agreements with, that our members need to be listened to and they need to be respected. And, um, some of the, the way they execute warrants, you know, needs to be taken a look at very closely. Make sure that it's, things are, these are done in the proper way. But also at the same time, you know, some of these families may have folks that, some families are being targeted. I'll say that. Some families are being targeted and they're being harassed, even though they're, it's maybe their relative that's a criminal or on the run. That doesn't mean the family needs to be harassed. So I, I do wanna say that, so it'd be nice to, love to hear from Mike, thank you.
You know, even, even, even the PO officers down there in Becker County or whatever, they should have that cultural training also.
Yeah.
You know, be involved in that, you know? I mean, you have these PO officers that don't wanna come up here and they don't wanna go in somebody's house because they don't wanna sit on their college yard, you know, that's bullshit, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we can keep going, talk about this for hours because even like, even when our PD prints out the state tickets to our BAM members, I mean, I mean, even back, even in our own, we have to do something with two eighty, we're gonna retrocede of what we're gonna do, we're gonna take that our own policing. I mean, there's all different options we're talking about, maybe even, and we talked about this before with Commissioner Harrington, is about having our own probation officers.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, these are the things that we could look at and start planning for the future. You know, where, where can we get some of the state money to start up some of our own services for our?
I talked to Randy last week.
Yeah.
And I, I mentioned that to him, you know, I was having a conversation with him for about forty-five minutes about this and, you know, we need to get some tribal members as PO officers, you know?
Yeah, yeah, we should be offering special scholarships for those guys that wanna get into these areas where they're most needed for us, for all of our jobs, you know? So I think that we could utilize our education department to offer these special scholarships that wanna become probation officers or criminal justice, you know, that we should look at doing something like this, so. That's a good, good discussion. All right, be good.
I'd also like to add to the agenda, Mike, that Castle Lake, I'd like to get some white, some of our wild rice up there for sale. It's Castle Lake office, cause we have two tribal members up there that are calling, they'd like to buy some whiter wild rice and, you know?
Yeah.
If we could get that set up up there.
I think what Liz, is Emily up there full time?
I believe so. Ben, are you on?
He told me he was up and went towards like Grammerie or something, that's what he was telling me a couple days ago. Or yesterday morning, and he was heading up that way.
Oh, is Mary on?
No.
So it must be self, self servicing.
I thought they were bringing them back the whole, full time.
I think, I thought they were due.
Yeah, check with Ben and Emily over there, and yeah, she could, she could sell that rice over here. And also, you know, I'm still getting the calls from the same people that we approved to help, I know, I get, and I guess I'll just use initials, A.L., that she still needs her, her roof repaired. And then I got another one from another elder, J.B. down the golf course, her bathroom's keyed. So I know that they need some type of assistance for us to help these elders that are.
I know.
Well, there's also housing to buy for that money, but they haven't gotten it, this buy for hundred and six thousand dollars or off reservation, so. I don't know when that's gonna come in, but.
Should be there.
You know, and there's a housing meeting today at one o'clock, so I sent, I told a few people that called me, I said, just go to the housing, I don't, you know? So I guess, so I just come to go to the authority and, cause I can't answer their questions either. I know that Raymond and Kathy sitting on the board, so I just refer them to those two council members when I have housing questions, so. And I think did, did, uh?
Well, they should be getting one point seven million, right? Again?
CARES Act, I think they got there, yeah, man.
Yeah, that's to do with them housing and finding their area, though. Most of that.
No.
Yeah.
They're gonna do six in Mid-Wash and, and, I think, no, ten, three point.
I know, I'm not talking about that sort of off reservation they're gonna help.
Oh, off reservation.
Yeah, sixteen, sixteen people are gonna help, it's sixty-seven hundred dollars a piece, they said so.
Okay.
You know, but they haven't gotten the money yet, so. I mean, we don't have the money here to, to do it, but.
And in the meantime, she wants another progress. I think it's, clear that.
Um, regarding the wild rice?
I'll get that done, yeah, I'll have to get that.
Oh.
We will.
Regarding the wild rice, the food shelf, EOC food shelf, who wants to explore the possibility of purchasing, hmm, six thousand pounds of wild rice from us?
Yeah, it's here in the package here.
Yeah.
Well, Liz, how much is in our inventory from last year? How much rice do we have?
That I don't know offhand.
I think we don't wanna sell everything up there, off our shelves, you know? You know, it don't be good for us, but, I mean, I know we get requests and like what Alms said is like, you know, Castle Lake, if people wanna buy a race over that way. I asked some guys too, I think, I asked the last fairing, I said, how much rice you guys have left? And I think, or I asked Steve White and he didn't know either, how much they had left in there. But they had, I know they had kinda had a, not a, not a good year last year, but this year looks promising for them, so. All right, next up is the review and through the.
Sorry, can I add, um, EOC has their emergency preparedness plan? I'd like to add, if we can add that.
All right, guys, anything else? The rating?
This is Ben, I'm on.
I raised up the doctor too, so.
Okay, he had to bug out, that's right.
Oh, yeah, I had to.
All right, motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Kathy.
Second with the addition.
Second with the addition to a Dumsey. All in favor?
Okay.
Motion. Oh, he is.
Don't use her.
Approval of the meeting minutes for seven two and seven nine. Is this seven two on here? You just got seven two?
Um, seven two and seven nine.
Seven nine?
Oh, I know, I forgot one thing, Liz, can you text me the number who they can get a hold for this, um, day labor?
Yeah, I will.
All right, all right, take it.
Seven two.
You got seven two?
Who can charge the day wages?
Um, Dorian's group is doing it up there.
Yeah, Dorian and Esther.
Yeah.
They said they had eight people show up the first day and then, I guess they did a lot of good work.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did.
And it's kinda, they said it's kinda, kinda hard because it's summertime, you know, they kinda cut through all that, you know? It'd be better if we did it in the fall or spring, you know? But I guess you do really good.
Yeah.
So I know that's pretty good. They said they had eight people the first day, then they got down to five, then they actually sold, must've been kinda hard, I know.
It's always hot and the bugs and, that'd be tough, tough work.
They hope for seventy-five bucks, they get, but people, you know, I mean, they wanna work, I mean, they can, if you guys wanna go to work, call on, they, call the workforce center, you know, I mean, they're looking for help up there, so. Yeah, I got about three or four that were asking about it. One says seventy-five dollars a day, so cash, so. Liz, and then the furniture for the new Bureau filling, they're ordering that right now, or through, with Kim Scott?
Yeah, um, they've been having some issues with that and I'm waiting for response from Danny because she had, sent me an email with some current concerns about it, that they're not getting their needs met. And they had actually asked if they could order their furniture from outside of Bojibway. And I didn't approve that, but they're not getting.
And we haven't seen the.
Feedback from.
Finance, well, that's, I mean, through enterprises, I know that we, we haven't seen a budget. I never reached to have much thing coming in to do for the report too, under all they're doing. And, you know, if they have these bigger comps like this, I mean, that really hurts them because they make some good money and help us, you know? And, uh, so it's kinda like with, with billing supplies and housing, quit buying from them, is that they were ready to get shut down, remember?
They was throwing a ball and, and ordered that stuff then, you know, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we gotta, we gotta kinda support our own business, but like I said, if there's a glitch somewhere, just find out where it's at.
Okay.
And get, keep them in a while by them stalling and holding up the process of moving in, I think we got a sixteen million dollar building up there sitting there, you know?
And that's, yeah, that's the only thing holding them up is the furniture.
Good. We'll talk to Kim too and see if they can get that ordered. And if she needs help, you know, reach out to Jessica, Jessica does work for you in Monoma, so.
All right.
All right. Anything else in these minutes, guys? Looks good.
Stand favor one?
I'm gonna have picks six of nine and seven two on the bottom. Level of the VA requesting fuel crew cost, this should be fire crew cost.
Six of nine?
Yeah, six of nine, that's second paragraph up and bottom.
Oh, yeah. All right, motion to approve minutes. So we have a motion? Motion by Almsy, second by Kathy, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion. All right, well, we're gonna table the meeting minutes for seven nine twenty, cause they're not in their package, so they'll be in the next meeting. We will review those and approve those, so. Calendar review. Coming up, the bunch of CARES Act.
Tomorrow, there's a consultation call with Governor Walz and Peggy.
Oh, yeah, four o'clock with the NPCA or with the water and wild rice.
Yeah.
They want all the leaders on there at four o'clock tomorrow, so.
And then, uh, today at one thirty, there's that tribal self-governance webinar on the CARES funds. And I did send that out to staff who are, you know? Um, I've been having a conversation with education, and we've been talking about, um, COLA school board, and they've been bringing a lot of their items to this table for, cause you guys are their school board right now. So, um, we talked about the need to separate those meetings so that it's not commingling with RBC minutes and their school board stuff. So I asked them to give me some dates, um, so that we can meet with them specifically as COLA school board.
Can we just appoint each of us, appoint a school board member and then just to get it going? And then this, and then following, hopefully by twenty twenty-two, we can actually have an election. Cause I see Leech Lake, they're already, they're already doing an election for the school board right now, so.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, unless the council wants to have a special election like next year for a school board, but, I mean, we could wait till twenty twenty-two for the school board. And I mean, if we can appoint a school board member now to kinda handle this, to kinda be the buffer between us and them? I mean, it's up to you guys, I mean, for discussion here, if you guys wanna, if you guys wanna appoint a school board member, so. I want that list, would that work?
Okay.
And I think that they have their bylaws and everything all set up, so, cause I know that when we do appoint, they'll have to go through a training of, of court training and all this stuff, to do Robert's rules and, yeah, so I know that they'll have to, uh, but I, like I said, I mean, I encourage all these, these boards to empower our people, so I think it's important, so.
Okay, so I'll start coordinating that, but I know they have a lot of items on the table that they're still waiting for. And they would like to separate that out, so if you guys have, they gave me some dates next week, if we could sit down and get that done for them, at least back piece. Um, they have Tuesday the twenty-first, they're open from eleven thirty to two, if any of that.
I, I think Wednesday would work better for me.
Wednesday the twenty-second?
Wednesday will meet, we'll have a council meeting next Thursday, but Wednesday works for me.
Wednesday? Okay, they've got time from eight to ten, or in the afternoon from twelve before. Any times working there? I'm assuming they're only gonna need probably about an hour or whatever.
Eight to ten is fine with me.
Yeah.
Eight AM?
Is it gonna be on Teams?
We can do it on Teams if we'd like.
Yeah, Teams would probably work best, huh?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, you know, before I forget, Liz, I put it on the agenda also is that, uh, the housing board wants the chairman and the secretary of charge to, to put their picks on there, cause their, their, their board calls for a board of seven and it's in their budget.
Okay, I'll get you the name today, or I'll get the, the board by one o'clock.
Huh?
I'll get them a name to name by one.
Yeah.
Two people, so. Yeah, I'll get you that name by one too?
Yeah, just the chairman and secretary.
Okay.
You ready with on your read?
Huh?
Do you have anybody?
Yeah, I do, uh, they, they started sending him, uh, they did start sending him, um, the numbers to call in them.
Who is it?
Uh, Mike Thompson.
Well, he hasn't shown where any of the meeting minutes, any of the minutes, meetings are.
Oh, he's on a, he, he's, he's on a medical leave and I just talked to Dennis about that. He's got, uh, six months, cause I told him, I said, well, if he hadn't been there for three meetings, it's a three-meeting mandatory. And he said, oh, really, he's on a medical leave, so he gets up for six months. But I told him to send him an email and make sure he gets on the, cause he can call in on the meeting. If not, if not, I was gonna, if not, I was gonna put someone else on.
All right, uh, do we have, uh, okay, that's the calendar.
Can, um, can we go back to the agenda one more time?
Yeah.
I just got a, a email from, um, the elders council and they'd like to, um, just have their letter on. They wrote a letter, if we can just add that, and then I'll read it when we get to it. Can we, okay.
All right. Ben Bement, are you on the phone still? Maybe get.
Yes, I am.
You're up on the elders' project guidelines.
Mary, Mary Rigard, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am, good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Um, we've been asked by the council to refine those guidelines and we've been working on it, uh. Mary, where are we at with legal on the definition?
Um, it's, we've kind of approved, um, Liz, do they have a copy of the guidelines? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so, um, air conditioners were approved by legal and Dr. Gardner, um, under the CARES Act. Um, the doors were approved and the windows and screens were approved to be, um, utilized under the CARES Act. Doctors, gardeners did not believe, like stove, um, refrigerators, water heaters, um, those are, um, would not be eligible under the CARES Act. So these are the, the four things that are, that he, he and legal both approved that we could, um, apply towards the course, the CARES funding.
Cool. Be good.
So, so how soon can we get the air conditioners?
Uh, I'll have to work with Valerie and see how we go about that with the funding then.
Okay, so we're good.
Yeah, we just need a council approval on this, uh, guidelines to move forward with them. One thing I would question a little bit with them is, you mentioned very refrigerator. I think if we have a diabetic elder who needs the insulin and needs to refrigerate it, that would probably be allowable, but we can check it to that.
Well, I did ask Dr. Gardner that then, I mean, that was one of my suggestions and he did not feel that that, even with that, that it wouldn't fall under the COVID CARES.
Oh, maybe, I gotta, I gotta go back to do this, just, just, sorry. I'm good, thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Ray.
Thanks, Ray. The only other question I had on it, guys, was about the, the six, the cleaning supplies. You know, I don't know if the council wants to continue to include that sort of stuff because we should be able to get that for the elders through the EOC.
Yeah.
At this time, so that was the only other question I had.
That's what I mentioned before, some of the stuff they get right through to EOC too, you know? Even, you know, even health, paying their life bill or, you know, or fuel bill or whatever they have there.
Mary, is there so much for each district or how, how do you do that?
It's in this letter here, pal.
Is it?
Right here, you know, this orange one here, first one, aren't you seeing your battery there? Right there, yeah?
Yeah, what about like, what about like bathrooms? Toilets and, uh, cause we got a lot of calls on bathroom repairs.
I can double check on that, Chairman Fairbank, um, like I said, I thought like water heaters should be eligible because of the necessity to wash your hands continuously and stuff through this, but that was not approved. So I can, I can ask Dr. Gardner what his thoughts are on a, on a bathroom and toilet?
Well, it might be more under sanitation, you know, of human, how do you say it, uh, healthcare or.
Right.
You know, just, just to make sure.
Personal hygiene.
Yeah, hygiene, that's what I'd be under, so.
I would think that, I would think that if legal gave us that opinion on the cleanup, that it was for that health reason, that's why we're, you know, because it attracts rodents and, you know what I mean? And dangers kids, I would think that something like that would also fall into.
We're using that though, out of, from the behavioral health forms, that cleanup.
Oh, yes, you're right, sorry.
All right, check ahead, but, uh, well, it looks good, I mean, so far, so good, I mean, we could, like I said, it's dark anyway. Yeah, we could keep adding to this list, so. You need approval from us, Ben, on this?
Yes, I do, I greatly appreciate it.
Okay, a motion?
Wait a minute, can't you do, um, for bathrooms for handicap?
That's, didn't say that would be recommend.
Some of the items, I think what we'll do is we'll be able to, if the council will allow it, that we will be checking on different items that are requested.
And that could be.
To get them verified if they're approved or not. I think some of it, cause the unique that's, it's gonna have to probably go as, you know, we're gonna have to develop as we go.
So we can put that in our motion that will adopt other, other, how do you say it, uh? So we can put that in our motion that we'll adopt other, other, how do you say it, uh? I'll make a motion with, with, uh, future additions to it. Yeah, motion by Amaze to approve this, uh, guidelines for our elders related to COVID-nineteen with the additions and also with the improvements of more information we get from our attorneys. And Kathy's in a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Ready? Raise.
Raise, raise off.
Oh, yeah, okay. Motion carries. We just approved this out with addition that they can add more stuff when they get. It's coming out of CARES Act anyway, so.
If it's, if it's coming out of the CARES Act and they can get those cleaning supplies through EOC, do we still need to put ten thousand dollars in every district?
Sure we will, at least.
Well, I'm just saying, general fund is hurting. General fund is hurting, so.
Oh, it's coming out of CARES Act, so.
Yeah, but we allocate on the general fund. That ten thousand, did we, did we not? I believe we did, originally.
We could almost put the same regulation business.
I would take your thoughts, I think we were talking about this, we give you thousand dollars out of the CARES Act.
Was it then? Okay, okay.
But we can make sure it is, it's all covered up in CARES Act.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure, Wes, we could mention.
We'll check with God and make sure.
Oh, yeah, have we even got a chance?
So, do we wanna leave in the cleaning supplies or not, guys?
I guess as requested, cause if the EOC didn't bring him anything, I guess we could bring him something. What do you think?
Yeah, or else just work with EOC to get more of those cleaning supplies on, on hand for that.
Right.
Because, you know.
We can work with EOC on that.
All we wanna do is make sure. You know? We don't wanna give money for cleaning supplies and it's not used like for that, so.
You're right. And the other thing, just to clarify, is this is just council approved, correct? It's, so, it's not anything that we're gonna announce or anything like that, it's gonna be, um, you're gonna say, give so-and-so an air conditioner, is that how, that's how it's gonna go, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I, we could get bombarded with requests for air conditioners.
Yeah.
If we don't, you know, if I just want to make sure and know how to move forward.
Right, and that's what we're recommending, council, is that we would recommend that is, you guys call us, we'll take care of it, kind of deal? Is that okay?
Sounds good, mate. You guys good with Ben now? All right, Rigard, Ben?
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it, thanks, Mary, for helping out. Thank you. Bye.
Scott Stevens, are you on?
Okay, is, did you hear what I was saying?
I sent you a text. Frank, are you on?
Okay. Frank's on, um, what else can we talk about? About some of the signature stuff.
That's, that's okay, we'll do.
We'll come out right on.
Good morning, Scott and Steve?
Good morning, guys, you're up?
Steve's two.
We're up, good timing. Good deal. So, has, uh, did everybody receive the, uh, PowerPoint that, uh, I sent over?
Yeah.
Okay. All we'll do is, is just walk through, walk through that and it'll, um, can have discussions, um, um, when prompted, so. Basically, it's, uh, phase, phase two and phase three, uh, as you, as you recall, um, we went through that, um, what we did is we met with, um, EOC, uh, Ed and Carson on their criteria and, and what that was gonna look like and, um, how we know when we, we achieve that or when we were approaching that, on moving to, uh, the next phase. Um, so with those discussions we had, um, um, it prompted this and prompted further discussions on trying to, uh, trying to move forward, um, in opening up and bringing more, more staff, um, back to work based off from business. So, um, phase two, um, requirements, uh, at this point, Shooting Star expects to complete the phase, the two fourteen-day incubation periods, uh, today, which would be the sixteenth, uh, in regards to the criteria that was established by EOC. Um, without major incidents or issues, uh, brought forward by the wider emergency management team. Um, we had met with Ed, um, previous to this, and I was on the phone with him, um, yesterday, late afternoon, and, um, at this point in time, um, you know, that's why, that's why we're here meeting with, with you is, um, planning to move to the next, the next phase and seeking approval to do so. Um, moving to phase two, um, some of the changes proposed on the next sheet, guests and team members will use the self-serve screen, screening devices. Um, follow-up screening will occur if indicated by temperatures over a hundred degrees or any, or if any illnesses reported or, or are observed. Um, and I know, uh, Christie and her team had, had, um, had shown, um, the council and, and we, we demo, demoed the, uh, self-screening device as well here at Shooting Star. Um, seems to work pretty well, we spoke about it prior in a previous meeting as well. One of the things that I didn't, uh, identify that it had was a tracking device, not similar to what we're doing now for tra, for tracking and tracing. So, a, as I'm sure you seen through the demo, we are able to track and trace via identification and a swipe of a driver's license or a identification, um, ID. Um, so, we would follow the screening, uh, follow-up, uh, screening will occur if, uh, indicated by a temperature over a hundred degrees or any illnesses reported or observed. Uh, guests, the, the, um, the next, uh, change would be, um, moving to smoking. Um, we would go back to our smoking, uh, in phases one through four. Non-smoking would, would go back to our section five. Um, that is what we are proposing. Uh, we propose turning on every, uh, other slot machine. Menomen would have four hundred and forty slot machines. Hours for Menomen operation, of course, is twenty-four, uh, hours, seven days a week. Bagley would, um, move to a hundred and fifteen slot machines. Bagley hours, um, would stay the same as well, they currently are. Sunday through Thursday, eleventh midnight, and Friday and Saturdays, eleven AM to two AM. And we included phase three as well on the next, the next page, um, requirements. Um, our thought process with, with including it was, if the status of COVID is, as it is currently in, in our region, that we would, if we meet the two fourteen-day incubation periods, which is, again, which was what will be requested by the EOC to meet, that we would automatically just move to phase three. Um, so, again, Shooting Star, uh, expects to complete the two fourteen-day, um, incubation periods on Thursday, August thirteenth, that's when that, that date would arrive for us. Uh, when this time period arrives, we will, uh, process the phase three implementation. Guests and team members continued, uh, with self-screening practices before entering the building. Masks are worn by team members and guests, that would continue. Um, all slot machines will, would be activated. Um, review possible tele, teleconference bingo, uh, starting up at that point in time. Uh, increased number of, of gaming tables based on demand. Um, event center, uh, would reopen at fifty percent for social distancing, for concerts, banquets, meetings, weddings, events or reunions. Two and eight would also, uh, reopen at that time. Expanded seating in wooden beverage, uh, areas. Uh, Stardust would reopen, uh, which expand available hotel rooms, um, for us, uh, pool and the arcade, um, would reopen and allowing children, uh, back on property, um, at that time as well. Uh, the buffet and the spa, at that point in time, would remain, would remain closed. So again, based on the status of, of COVID a, at that time and meeting the requirements of the EOC, um, that is, that is what we'd like to do is just to move into, um, phase three. Uh, if everything is good, effective the thirteenth of August.
Well, the rock's coming down too, so. I mean, picking the rock, yeah. All right, thanks, Scott. So, uh, council, I guess, I mean, they got there through their incubation periods for phase two anyways, so. I mean, uh, is there any questions for phase two? I know we need our income that's coming out of this company right now, I think that the extra machines would help out, so.
Menomen is doing all right, I mean, considering.
Yeah, but we're trying to bring back more employees, so it's just like, we gotta have more machine on it, or even.
Each one of the employees, uh, someone who's been since they opened, not called back.
Is that the managers?
And I, I don't know, there's four of them.
Yeah, I know, and I think that's.
And they're all credible members.
I think when we get into like the, the personnel stuff, I think we should type in executive for them, but. But I mean, but if, but if it's a general employee question, we could discuss it here, but I think those are the things that were, I think what Scott talks about when you approach to phase two and phase three is like we're, we're trying to migrate our employees to come back to work through these phases. And I think that's what, that's when we, we as council, we need more cleaners, more people at the front doors to man the, you know, the, the safety protocols, is like, we need more employees to come back to work, so, I mean. And I think that's where it boils down to, is we need more machines on if we're going to, you know, bring more people back to work, so. So I think that's what, uh, and I know they followed, uh, EOC's recommendations of incubation periods and, you know, I, I think our safety protocols are, are better than like what, I think when we went up to, um, Fortune Bay, I know they just took our temperature and, and the picture of us and then, um, that was it, you know? But, I mean, for us, it's like, I think we're doing the same thing, but we're doing, I think, more kind of like hands-down, more kind of man-labored and hands-labored without the screening machine, and also with the, the pictures and stuff, you know, I think that. And I think we ordered, I think that, what Scott said too, is he ordered those machines that take your temperature and your picture. So I'm thinking that we're gonna be kind of more, kind of, uh, up to, up to speed when it comes to technology for our gaming, so they had that one set down here, I think they may remove it because it's some problem with.
Really?
But there's, I mean, there's all kinds of different, I mean, I know at Blackbird, they have one different one, I think every one of them has a some type of different, uh, type of hardware or software that they have, so. You know, I'm in favor of us reopening, but I, I'm not in favor of is getting our community secure right now. I think we, my opinion is, I think we should stay as we are right now for a couple more weeks and see where the COVID spike and stuff is at. We, cases are going up every day here.
I agree with you.
You know, especially in, uh, a lot of our gamers are coming from North Dakota and, you know, in town area, so.
Now, the assessment a couple weeks.
Yeah, I think so too.
That'd be nice.
I'd like to stay at, you know, what, or.
Cause if we open it up right now, I mean, they were just talking pinehurst, they're telling the rich world, they're telling these places, you know?
I miss it.
Well. Can you, um, let the membership know that I'll be speaking, that's my, me and Mike will be coming in?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're discussing right now, but hang on.
Don't wanna wait on you, but I wanna be able to come back in. Is that?
Yeah.
Amaze, you okay with that?
That's fine with me.
You okay with that, Alan? You okay with that, Kathy?
Yeah, we're just finishing this, this scheme.
Oh, we already had discussion with them already?
Uh, with Mike, yes, but I wanna, I feel, uh, I feel disrespected because you guys didn't reach out to me and we have personal relationships, so I'm kinda hurt. But, um, I'll, I'll, I'll do the due process and I'll wait for my time to speak.
You guys. So Scott, I guess, I, I guess coming from us as council, I guess, the council members are, are kind of like, uh, I guess still kind of we're, weary about what's going on with, around our community, but I know talking to Ed and, or talking to the EOC is like, you know, this is what, I mean, I, I kinda knew that COVID was gonna get to our resorts because of the amount of people that come from one of the state that go to our resorts, but. You know, I was talking to Ed the other day about, about Sixty Pinehurst, and I was like, you know, we're sending our own nurses, we're sending our own health teams over here, or disinfecting. You know, we're giving out, we're spending a lot of energy and time over there, and I was like, and I was like, these guys should have been up to, I mean, they, I don't know, I mean, I, I was kind of, I was kind of more kind of, uh, I don't know. I, I feel like the businesses within our borders should be up to speed on some of this stuff. I know that, I know that these res orders are gonna be the ones that, that do good in the summertime, I know that, I know that we have to, of course, help within our borders if needed, which we're, we are doing, but I know, you know, it's not gonna, it is like, it's almost like we should almost have to send them a bill for all the, all the, all the services that we're doing and testing. You know, we're doing a lot of testing from, you know, there's the testing stuff that we did, of course, within our, within our means of our borders, but I'm just saying that, you know, when we're starting testing all, all these non, non-Natives, I think that's where it kind of, where it kind of comes on to, is I feel like that, that we should have something more in place for, for these individual businesses within our borders that they, that they have to, they have to mimic our standards of safety, like what we do at our gaming and, you know, that we have to, that they're gonna have to have no parties, social distancing, all the stuff that, that we go through, that they should be doing the same thing at New Horizons or all these resorts are, Pinehurst, all of them across within our borders, that they should all be abiding by our, our same rules. And I think if we had these in place, I think that we probably would be not hitting any spiking or whatever, you know, or getting these cases with, that, that they bring from outside to our. Our nation. We should have been that three months ago when we shut this. Yeah. No. But that's all I'm saying, is like, you know, and, and that, and but. Getting back to phase two, I know that council wants to relook at it again, I think that it's gonna, you know, I know that you're, you're working with, uh, with, uh, Ed over at EOC and, uh, and I think we'll bring it back to the table in a week or two, is that fine? Scott? Scott?
No, I, you know, we respect the, the council's decision and understand, um, there, there would be one thing that I think could really help us right now, um, you know, with that decision, and that would be, um, moving to implement the automated stations. What we're doing now is labor and tents at the front door and the staff that we have is limited right now for operations. And we're utilizing staff from many different areas, pretty much every area throughout the casino to man those stations. And we can get the same results. Again, even with speaking with Ed, with going to the automated stations as we're getting now with manning it. At times we'll have, you know, up to four people up there. This would allow us to screen and to stop some of the, the lines that are created out the front door as well. So, if, if we could maybe move on that separately, um, I think that would really help us out, you know, labor wise here, staffing wise, um, as well, because we're pulling in staff from other areas that they're needed, um, during busy times just to do the, the screening. It would probably take a week or, week or maybe a little longer to, to get the equipment purchased and to get it set up, but I, I think that would really help us out.
Getting some of that, like what we just talked about, the screener stuff and the automated stuff that takes your temperature as you walk in and.
Well, yeah, they're gonna have to buy that eventually.
And that's what you're saying is this came approval to do it so we can put it into a process and, and phase it in, so.
Maybe they could, uh, buy it and then, uh, test it, you know what I mean? Kind of do a little test, test on, you know?
Well, we were testing up on a, up at the back door here, but I know something happened to it.
Yeah, that's what I heard. But they had some malfunction or something too, so.
But Scott, do you guys enjoy the same, uh, hardware or software with, what we had back here at the R B C, is it?
It, it is. I, I was, uh, speaking with Christie on it. I believe it's through Chuck Hale, uh, who's at Fargo Electronic Communications. Um, so I'd have to follow up with that. I, I, we never heard of any, any issues, so that, that's news to us. I mean, it worked fine when it was here, so we'd have to identify what went on and have that conversation.
Yeah, I know Blackberry uses that software, something sim, very similar to that. When we, when you walk into their front door, they gate it off and you have to walk, and they take your temperature as you walk in.
That's just, that's just a rumor I'd heard. I don't know if that's any fact that or not, Scott, you know, I, because I was asked about where it was at this morning, because it was here last, earlier this weekend, last weekend now, yesterday and today it's not here. So that's why I was wondering what happened to it.
I don't think we paid for it yet.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think they, they put it on loan for a day to use to test it. That was all they had for was that day.
All right. You guys good with him ordering some stuff to, to order it, yeah, test it out, you know, see how it works, you know? All right, go ahead. You gotta go on that one, Scott?
All right, that sounds great. All right, then we'll, uh, we'll be back in a, in a couple of weeks and.
Sounds good.
All right, make sure.
We can now have further discussion next Thursday as well at the commission meeting.
Yes.
Gaming meeting. Okay. Thank you.
Do you guys want to do Eugene now or?
Frank, are you on?
Or is Frank cut down?
Yes, I am.
Let's do Frank, I guess, then we can do Eugene after that. Frank, you got the floor?
Okay. So we're talking about Hudson versus Dinky?
Yep.
When I, when I, and I assume the memo primarily is where we're starting from. I looked at Phil's memo. I, I don't exactly agree with everything, everything that he's said in here. Um, the idea of retroactivity, generally speaking, he's correct, but I think that if there's an interest in trying to fix or remove that particular language that was amended in two thousand and six about the felony, then I think there's a way to go about it, but I think it starts with a petition to the B I A asking them to vacate the election results with a, what I would say is a long explanation of the election problems that we've had as a result of the problem, why the, um, and why the fix was originally put in. And I think, I think there's a way for the M C T as a tribe, if the tribe's interested, uh, to go forward doing that mechanism. At, at this point in time, um, Joe Plummer and I have been looking at some of the problems over at Leech Lake with regard to trying to say who's a convicted felon and who isn't a convicted felon. And looking at the materials that were provided in the past, not all the materials have been provided from Leech Lake in, into the election system. And I, in about two thousand and six or later than in two thousand and six, there was a big, long challenge between Archie and George Gogeli about who was a convicted felon and who was, uh, whose charges were actually resulted in something lesser, a, a gross misdemeanor conviction. And after months of arguments and litigation, the court determined, the tribal court determined that they both had met the requirements to not be convicted felons and that they were both eligible to hold office and run for office. And there's a whole bunch of, there's a whole big court file on this. And when Leech Lake did some subsequent elections, they omitted that information. And, and that information had actually been forwarded to the T E C, to Gary Fraser at that time, because the language that we have in our constitution says, if you've ever been convicted, well, if ever is retroactive, it goes backward. And under the U S constitution and the, our constitution, the M C T constitution, you can't make laws that apply to people retroactively and punish them. And that's, it's called ex post facto, it's after the fact. And so that issue was raised a long time ago with the T E C and they never followed up on it. Now, I know that they didn't want people like Chip and Skip and Tig and other people trying to run for office and do other things. And those people are gone, but the problems continue. And I, just to tell you a different story about it, one of the times I was an election judge for Fond du Lac, they had three different primaries. And one, in one of the primaries, one of the people was accused of being a convicted felon from, I think it was maybe Connecticut. And after researching everything, it was discovered that he wasn't a convicted felon because he had fled the state and never returned for prosecution in all of fourteen years. And so Fond du Lac had to restart the primary and include him because he had never been convicted. He was on the run from a felony, you know, but that didn't bar him from running. And so that told me right then that what we're doing is we're relying, our constitution is now relying on eighty-seven counties in Minnesota that have elected prosecutors to decide what level charges to apply to different people, what deals to make and how the turnout ends up. And, and then you go to fifty states. And so you don't really have an even playing field even for who gets prosecuted and who doesn't. There was another election challenge in Fond du Lac not too long ago. And that person, I don't know how she was able to do it, but she had cashed a check that was intended for the R B C. And while there was a felony charge prosecution in Carlton County during the election, because she had been removed by a petition and then was still able to re, re-sign up for running for office again. So as I'm looking at her not being certified, I can see on the criminal side of Minnesota that the charges have been dropped by the Carlton County Attorney. I don't know why, but there is no longer a prosecution, so she was never convicted of a felony. And we had to say she can be certified because she wasn't convicted. So the law is goofed up to begin with and, you know, I mean, if you read Phil's memo, you get to page three and he puts my name by, you know, Tony Watten and Chip, and he, but he doesn't say Frank was right. You know, and so, but you know, that's how it turned out. But the real issue, the real issue comes down to what goofed up our election was the waivers that were requested by the T E C for same-day election, um, registration. And so normally elections, um, would normally have a list of eligible registered voters posted at the T E C or maybe even at the R B C, uh, headquarters. Of all the eligible voters thirty days before the election, and then you would know what thirty percent of that number is. But because it was same-day registration, you didn't know what the number was until the end of the day. And the end of the day, the number is equal to the number of voters that essentially participated and got in to vote. And that's why the number was so low and that's why the protection mechanism of thirty percent didn't work for us because it essentially ninety-eight percent of the people voted for that referendum in a positive way. Everybody said, we don't want a convicted felon, you know, running our stuff. And, and, and that was great. I know they wanted it to go through, but they did it in a way that didn't even meet the thirty-day notice period in my arguments. There's a whole bunch of things that were wrong with this and there's been a whole bunch of things that have happened after this. The politics of it also would eliminate Melanie's concerns, you know, because this impacts her to some degree. And I know she's concerned about it and I know there's always conversations about her and aren't she at different places on mass, and asking about those kinds of questions. That's something to consider as well. You know, if White Earth does it, I mean, we've got half the population. You know, there's a lot of people that are already being penalized because of the way people are prosecuted and labeled and have criminal records, whether it's right or wrong and things like that. My personal belief is that, you know, people, people need a chance and, you know, I know a guy who's convicted right here in Buffalo that was a felony and he signed up every year, every four years to run. He paid his five dollars and he got eight to ten votes. But so what? You know, so it's, it's hard for me to disenfranchise anybody in our system at my mind because of our history. And doing this to ourselves and coupling ourselves to all these other state and federal governments for prosecutions to see whether or not we were prosecuted the same or consistently, that, that isn't even possible. And then to apply it retroactively, you know, it's, it's had a lot of tough implications over, over the different elections since then. And I would say if there's a way, which I'd like to think there always is, um, there's a way to get there. And it takes the tribal government, because when I look at the decision from Hudson versus Dinky, it looks like if the tribal government was making the request, being the T E C and the M C T, then I think it would go somewhere with the B I A with the request because of this decision. They might say no, you know, but I think there's a way to at least argue that it's certainly partially wrong because of the words if ever. And if if ever is wrong, then I think that whole phrase needs to, you know, be looked at and examined and considered. And if that's the case, then, you know, do we have to have another secretarial referendum for that? Well, that sounds crazy and I doubt anybody wants to have a referendum to undo that language. That sounds good. And so that really brings us back to a petition to the B I A in my mind and see if we can get them to understand why it's goofed up and, you know, why, why we're asking to just have it, you know, vacated and removed from our constitution for those reasons. I don't, I don't know what the fallout would be from people's perceptions, but, you know, I don't think a vote helps on it. I don't think the feds want to do a vote for such a thing to convey the truth either, so. I think it still comes back to starting out with a petition, seeing if the T E C wants to support it. And, and I guess that's, that's what I would say about it right now. If there's any questions, please say so.
Thanks Frank. All right, very good. I'll talk to you guys in the future. Have a good day.
Thank you all a minute.
Good work. Maybe I'll do Scott again, uh, you guys think we bring in Eugene or?
Mine's got to take Scott along these years.
I was going to maybe short, uh.
Follow our agenda here.
Go ahead. You got it. We got a guy that wants to.
Well, the agenda's been approved, so let's go ahead.
Okay, so, so the, we visited yesterday about the member assistance. And so I sent you this email and maybe you've seen it or maybe haven't seen it this morning. And it talks about the, the questions, frequently asked questions about member assistance and what is allowed and what isn't. And straight for cap is not allowed. It says basically you can tailor the program to this, you know, but the big issue is however such a program should be structured in such a manner as will ensure that such assistance is determined to be necessary in response to COVID nineteen public health emergency and otherwise satisfies the requirements of CARE, CARES Act and other applicable laws. So, you know, there's a lot of people with, uh, needs before care, COVID came along. There's a lot of people with needs today and as well, and some probably are COVID and CARES related and maybe some are not COVID and CARES related. So we just don't want to get in trouble with the regs. You know, and in, in the, you know, in Washington, they don't seem to be interested in, uh, relaxing any of the rights at all. So I'm not sure how we determine, you know, that we ensure, what is our responsibility to ensure that the assistance is determined to be necessary in response to COVID nineteen. And, you know, that's probably a legal question.
I think if we, uh, we take a look at what some of the other tribes have done and if you could, maybe go link up with Veronica and Danya and come up with a process of what application might look. And a legal memo attached with the application and a set budget, basically a budget resolution, all three of those. Put it together, maybe come back a week from now and then you see if we can get it approved. Sound good, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, because I know Leech Lake has meeting today. Their council being, they're going to approve their, their application today, so we get a copy of that application, so. Boy, a week to work on this one.
There'd be guidelines and everything in there. So it'd be a budget resolution, basically with the proof guidelines and the application. Because I know, I know a lot of our members want, um, want to be able to get direct assistance and, so that's, I think it's a good thing to help the people.
So I've got budget resolution, application, guidelines. Who's going to determine the budget?
Legal.
Legal, legal memo. So do the, make the assumption that every eight, a, every individual over a certain age come back with a number or every individual just come up with suggestions of what that could look like.
I think that should be a council suggestion.
Well, Kathy, what do you think it should be?
I think it should be a council decision.
What do you think? How much per member do you think?
I think he came across with five hundred and.
Five hundred?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I know we got, we got fifteen thousand nine hundred and six, eighteen over.
Eighteen and over, five hundred?
Well, we got fifteen thousand nine hundred, so sixteen thousand numbers that are over eighteen years old. And if we do a thousand, that's sixteen million dollars. If we do five hundred, it's gonna, if we do five hundred, it's only eight million dollars. So I figure five hundred bucks on individual.
Eighteen and over?
Yeah, eighteen over, that will be, that could get assistance.
Under the guidelines.
Yeah, under the guidelines. So what you could.
But I don't want to see us jump through.
No, they just apply to check a box with their hardship was. It's pretty simple.
You're a member.
Yeah. Check your tribal I D number, make sure they're enrolled and then if they hit, if they hit hardship boxes and it's a process to check, we're not going to say no time. We talked about that before, that they'll get a check when it gets to them. Because I know Scott's going to discuss, uh, finances is going to be under, and they're going to be getting a, so if we set a timeline, then they're going to get a billion calls.
Yeah.
So we just got to see that this.
The owners is going to have to review and make sure that you're enrolled.
So there's a process that, that, that we'll be going through or finance will, and enrollments will be going through to double check that they're enrolled and that they check the box for hardships and that they're eligible. And then they'll be mailed a check.
Yeah, but what about, uh, two things are going to come up. There's some people turning eighteen today and yesterday and next week. Is the date, the date they sign the application? Because I could sign the application tomorrow and I'm eighteen tomorrow. I could sign the application today and I die tomorrow, or I died sometimes since COVID started. And those issues are going to come up and they're going to say, well, my. And those issues are gonna come up and they're gonna say, well, my, my family member was, you know, here when COVID started in April and you're not allowing them. I don't, I'm looking for suggestions.
Yeah, just, just look at the, just look at the other, other nations did, so. You don't need to get caught up with that right now, so, but it is a good question, so.
Now, are they gonna be directly paid to the applicant or are they gonna be paid to the vendor if they, if they helped or something?
Well, that'll be something, he'll obtain information from Boise Forest and Leech Lake. I think it actually goes directly to the individual.
I know, I looked at Boise Forest yesterday and it's going right to the individual.
Okay. We can probably get it done internally, but to have Vanya hold and review it by next week, that all depends upon her time, but she may or may not be able to. So I'm not sure what you want me to do there. If you want Ronnie and you do, uh, put this forward and maybe Nicole and then send it to Vanya and if she gets it done, she gets it done. If she doesn't, I'm not sure what you want me to do.
Well, just, just get working on it.
Anything else?
Did I take a break or you got?
Yeah, I took a break.
All right, we'll take a break. We'll take a 10-minute break.